I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, May 4th, and we will begin with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, we will move on to Department -- oh, I forgot to note for the record that two of us are present today, Commissioner Giffens and myself. Commissioner Jones is absent today. And then we will move on to Department updates. We will begin with the Health Department. Ms. Cottle, good morning.
Good morning to you. The increase in COVID-19 cases is continuing, and this is true for Indiana. Now, the good news is that severe cases, hospitalizations, and death do -- does remain low. Our CDC community level did rise to medium last week, and we had talked about that, and we were anticipating that change. Currently, our seven-day average of cases per 100,000 dropped below 200. So this could refer back to a low community level, perhaps this week or next. The CDC recommendation for medium level includes vaccinations, testing is needed, and talking with your provider about masks and other precautions based on your health needs. So we encourage everybody to, you know, be prepared, have your mask handy when you need it, assess your current situation and health needs on whether or not you need to take additional precautions, and just be aware that the virus is circulating. Now, when I look at our kind of seven-day average of cases, that has steadily been going up, not drastically. Our numbers vary from day to day. So I just looked at them a moment ago, and it's possible that we may be just slightly higher than where we were Monday, or maybe even about the same. So maybe that's a good sign. We can -- we can hope that, and that we're kind of seeing some improvement beginning. But we will see. We continue to watch those numbers. I do want to take a moment to remind everybody that staying up to date with all of their vaccines is very, very important. So please take a moment, find some time to check your vaccine records, and make a plan to schedule an appointment for any vaccinations that are missing in the schedule for you and your family. You may also heard that Moderna and Pfizer have both submitted new EUA, Emergency Use Authorizations, requests for review. So Moderna has submitted data for vaccines for six months to under two years of age and for two to under six years of age. And Pfizer has submitted an EUA for a five-to-11-year-old booster. So the VERPAC, that's the Vaccine-Related Biological Products Advisory Committee, they have scheduled sessions to discuss these in June, and they will also be discussing in June the possibility of adjusting vaccine for the fall. So you know, with influenza, every year they determine what's going to go in next year's influenza vaccine. What do we think will be circulating? And so they're starting to have discussions about whether or not that makes sense for COVID vaccine or not. So June will be a busy month for the VERPAC committee. They have lots of things to review, talk about, and make decisions about. And then the CDC did in its morbidity and mortality weekly report indicated that COVID-19 was the third-leading cause of death in 2021, and that was behind heart disease and cancer. And on a more positive note, the think tanks that we had last week went very, very well. I want to thank all the participants for coming out and all of the volunteers for helping us with that, whether you were facilitating, planning, taking notes, or giving us your feedback. We are so happy to have that feedback. Our team is reviewing that information and the priorities that people identified. We'll be looking at things that may already be happening, groups that might be working on specific things. And then people have had an opportunity to provide feedback online as well. So we'll be taking all of that together and moving that forward. So stay tuned for more information on that in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Well, I want to remind people that their vaccination things includes tetanus, which oftentimes people forget about because it's not talked about that much. But also, Ms. Cottle, would you remind people where they can go get their vaccinations for COVID and their boosters?
Certainly. So, you know, any provider, your healthcare provider should be able to help you with that. Local pharmacies can help you with that, but also our Public Health Clinic, which is on Miller Drive. And the phone number to schedule an appointment is 353-3244, 3244. And they can schedule you an appointment. We do accept insurance. There's some -- we have Vaccine for Children program, so if you qualify for that, there may not be a charge. So the staff at the clinic can guide you through those options and where you fit in.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Great. We appreciate all of the information and your time and all of the hard work that got us to this point. So thank you for that. All right. With that, we have a few other Department updates.
Thank you, Commissioners. I just wanted to run up here this morning. There was a big article in the paper that I wished had been in last week. Our Form 11 -- excuse me, I still have a code. Our Form 11 went out last Thursday evening. Just to show you how good our post office is, people actually got them on Friday morning. I was hoping they'd kind of get through the weekend, but it didn't. So we're very busy, but I'm going to knock on wood. It's been a lot worse down there after Form 11 went out. Everybody's went up. We did -- I did -- I crunched some numbers. We crunched the numbers Monday, and actually, it's something like 80% of the parcels in Monroe County did go up. They went up all over the world, all over the place. It could just been a few percent. It could be hundreds of percent. So it just depended on where you were. It is the market. This isn't something that we are doing, you know, in-house. Monroe County isn't sitting around thinking about raising assessments. It is the market. Every -- each and every one of us knows what's happening in our streets. You can see there's bidding wars. There's very little inventory out there. And what -- when something goes on the market, it -- what I'm hearing right now from realtors, people are bringing cash offers to the table. And so there was a good article. One of the quotes was, if you have 250,000 to spend on a house, you better have 275 in cash. And that's scary. It's not going down. Next year, we're already -- we're already working in next year, and next year is even up more. So one thing I want to -- I want to tell the public out there, and you all understand this, we did put in -- we did put on about 1.9 billion with a B, new assessed valuation, highest we've ever done. That's the market. The paper sort of got it wrong when they said the hospital is 900 million. It will be. We only put 90 million on the hospital this year. That's all written off. So out of that 1.9 billion is only about 100 million that's the hospital. It will be close to 900 million when it's all finished, but we just write that off. So we never even think about that. So that was just new value. It's all of this, this new construction. Every place you look downtown, there's great big, huge cranes. Where I live out south of town, sitting at the house yesterday, and I heard this huge noise, and I looked at, and it was this humongous crane coming up from the road down below me. Now, I live in the county. I can't get to this house. It's under construction. It's got walls around, you know, great big. But it's a McMansion, and they're being built all over. And when you have to bring in a crane like you see downtown, there goes my values even more next year. This is happening to all of us. The good news is, hopefully, tax rates will go down a little bit next year. That's how the frozen levy works. We'll see what happens. We don't get -- we don't get any more money in the county just because we put billions on. We still get the normal amount. So let's see what happens. Don't panic that everybody's -- yesterday, I got, I don't know how many texts and phone calls at home saying, "You raised it by 50%. I can't afford my taxes." We don't know what they're going to be next year. And 50% doesn't mean you're going to have 50% more taxes, I can assure you. The good news is, next year, they're doing away with the mortgage exemption, the state is. That is good because they're going to put that 3,000 on all the homesteads. And right now, a lot of people don't have a mortgage. So if you don't have a mortgage, it's going to be, you're going to get an extra 3,000. So the state is doing some stuff. I'm sure that come November, they're going to be doing a lot more because they're going to get all these taxpayers so upset over market value. Their legislators are going to try to do something, but it's not up to them. It's up to the courts. So anyway, do you ladies have any questions? I know yours all went up. As I told people Saturday when we went out to breakfast, everybody was coming up to me to start, you know, "You raised it." And I said, "Thank me. You're rich now." Of course, that went over like a lead balloon, too. But, you know, you can't, there's no place to go. I mean, I look at my house, and I know in one of these years I'll retire, and I hope I can sell it for what I think it's worth, but who knows? Right now, if we could sell it for what we have on there, I don't know where you're going to go. You're not going to go anywhere in Monroe County and probably in Indiana. And I just talked to a gentleman from California this morning, talking about a couple of rental properties he had here. You know, he said, "Well, you should live in California." And I said, "I did, and you're a lot higher than we are." So I'm not being negative. I just want the public to understand it's not, we're not personally coming after you. I get the people that are on fixed -- everybody's on the fixed income. I don't care who you are. If you're working, you still only get so much money. And I do feel bad for people, and there's a lot of things that we can help you with, but I can't do much about the market right now.
Yeah. Thank you. Commissioner Giffens?
Well, I would remind people that you're not the one that sets the tax rate either at all, so that's important. And from talking to people in Brown County, their average home valuation has gone up even more, so.
Actually, for the first time ever, Brown County was higher than Monroe. And that was people, I think, moving to Brown, thinking it was going to be cheaper, and they were beating us. But it's the same everywhere, and I just want people to know, this is nothing personal, but I'm looking out to, I'm going to come to you and say, "Oh, I know this lady, so I'm going to lower it," or "I know this lady, I'm going to raise it." No, this is state law. I follow the law. And I have to thank Marty Hawk, who is a councilperson that's on, must be on radio a lot. I don't listen to radio very often, but apparently she's defending government, Monroe County government, that is the law. We're not doing anything. If we have a mistake, we'll fix it. But this values, for the most part, are not a mistake. That's what it is. So thank you all for listening, and I'm going back down and dealing with all the customers.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Assessor Sharp, thank you. Appreciate the explanation, and it's important to remember that housing values that are higher usually means a lower tax rate. If you go to a county west of us and the assessed value is much lower on average properties, you're going to find a much higher tax rate. So yeah, it's, if everybody's have, or most people's values have gone up, wait for the tax bill before you panic, for sure. Great. We have Treasurer McClellan here, speaking of tax bills.
Yep. Speaking of tax bills, good morning, Commissioners. And I'm here this morning because we're about, we're less than, we're about six days away from the tax deadline. So taxes are due on May 10th. That's Tuesday of next week, and I'm here to remind everybody to pay and how they can pay. They can pay online, by phone. We have a Dropbox, but in the Dropbox is great. It's right outside the north door, so if you want to come in person and you're like, and you have your check and your coupon, you can put it in the envelope and put it in the Dropbox, and we will mail a receipt. Or you can come in person, and you can mail it through the mail. Let me go back to mailing it through the mail. We go by postmark, so if you put it in the mail and it's postmarked by May 10th, it'll be on time. And then talking about coming in person, coming in person is definitely an option. We've been open since June of last year, and just want people to be aware that parking is not very easy downtown this time of year, that IU graduation is this weekend, so Friday, parking is going to be a complete zoo. Maybe Monday and Tuesday it will actually clear out a little bit, and you might actually have better luck on those days. But we hate to see people stressing out over parking and trying to get their taxes paid at the same time. So remember, online, by phone, by mail, Dropbox, and all that information is on your bill, and the Tuesday, and the due date is Tuesday next week, May 10th. Do you guys have any questions or anything else you want me to go over for people?
No, I think that was quite thorough.
Yeah. Appreciate it. Thank you so much for being here and reminding the public. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
My pleasure. Thanks.
Okay. Any other Department updates? Please, Recorder Schmitz?
Good morning, Commissioners and ladies and gentlemen, and everybody at home. Thank you. My name's Eric Schmitz. I'm the Monroe County Recorder. Excuse me if I'm a little out of breath. I've been running all morning and hauling books, large books around, and that is because we have a crew in my office from US Imaging, and they are scanning our entire collection of older deeds and miscellaneous records so that they can be digitized and made of more easily available. So that's going on. I've got a lot more books to move. And the other thing is that we are ready to purchase a large-format print copy scanner. And this is where I have to apologize if I jumped the guns a little bit. No, it's okay. All right. We needed to get some approval on that, but we had to jump really quickly because there was one left that they had at the price that they had it, and they had somebody else who was interested. So that should be delivered today. So that's what's going on there.
It's not a service contract, so you're fine.
Okay. Okay, good.
And I assume you worked with TSD and Mr. Evans?
Yeah, we will.
Excellent.
Yep. So we're good there. So that's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Good luck today. Good luck today.
Thank you. I better sign in.
All right. Any other Department updates? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is public comment. This part of our agenda is reserved for general public comment for items that are not on our agenda. Each person will have a total of three minutes for speaking. At 2 minutes and 30 seconds, you will hear a tone. Excellent. Thank you, TSD. And at that tone, that means you have 30 seconds to wrap up your comment. It looks like we have one commenter, Mr. Shelton via Zoom.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Shelton with the chamber, speaking again on behalf of CASA's Accord Point and Special Advocates. Want to remind the public that CASA's summer training is just about a month away now. It will be June 6th to the 29th, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday evenings from 5:30 to 8:30. It will be in person, and it will be at a new location. CASA, at the end of the month, is going to be moving into the showers complex in the CFC part. So if it is something you're interested in, we've got about 50 children right now who are still waiting to have a volunteer assigned to their case to help advocate for them and represent them as their parents go through the court system for abusing or neglecting their children. The CASA's job is to be the eyes and ears of the court and make sure that the court has all the information that Judge Galvin or Judge Harvey will need to be the de facto parent for that child for making the parental decisions while the case is still in effect. So it's a wonderful way to help your community. It's a wonderful way to help children. It can be very satisfying, and it's just a wonderful feeling when the case is over and the children have got into a permanent place, either back with their parents or have they have been adopted. So again, June 6th through the 29th, applications will be due here in the next couple of weeks, and then you'd be interviewed, have, fill out a form so you can be checked because you'll be working with children, so you'll need a background check. So for more info, you can go to monroecountycasas.org, click on the voluntary link. You'll find a frequently asked question page. You'll also find the application page, which you can fill out online or print out and fill out mail-in. So I invite people to think about that. You got a couple of weeks to get the applications in. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Shelton. It looks like we have another commenter, Councilmember Marty Hawk. Good morning.
Good morning. Can you ever tell if I have it turned on? Can you hear me now?
You can. We can hear you.
Great. A couple of things. First off, I wanted to say a big congratulations to the election team and all of the volunteers that did show up. I know where I was working, the polls, people from both sides of the aisle were there campaigning outside and very congenial and respectful of one another, and it just makes you proud to be a citizen here in Monroe County. So just wanted to share that because we were able to get the results so much quicker than many years ago when we didn't have the great technology that we have. So kudos to all those folks. The other thing I wanted to mention, and I did see some of the comments that Assessor Sharp just made, having to do with the assessed values and Form 11, and believe me, my phone's been ringing off the hook, and I'm trying to explain to people that by law, we have to go by market value and not just what we want to put on there for any other reason. You have to have facts behind that. But when I, when I heard you mentioned that, that didn't set the tax rates, we have to remember this, that even though that higher assessed value would, in theory, reduce the tax rate, we have to know that there are a lot of rate-controlled funds. So those, all of those CUM funds and so forth will go against that much higher assessed value after adjustments have been made. And so indeed, it could very well mean higher taxes. So I keep encouraging people, they're concerned about their high assessed value, that they let the folks know who vote on those, at all of our expenditures, the public dollar, that they are watching, and they want us to be concerned and respectful of their, their own family budgets and respectful of those public dollars. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you, Counselor Hawk. Anyone else have public comment to offer for items not on our agenda? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to our next agenda item, please.
Move approval of the minutes from April 27, 2022.
Second, any comments, corrections, edits?
I didn't see any.
I did not either. Excellent. All those in favor of approving the minutes for April 27, 2022, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 2-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claim stocket accounts payable May 4, 2022, and payroll May 6, 2022.
Second, and we have Ms. Miller here to tell us all about it.
Sorry about that. Good morning. The total for claims was $1,287,853.84. There were two items in the claims that exceeded $100,000 that I'll focus on, starting with $323,591.98 for Anthem, Inc., which was for April medical and pharmacy claims primarily. And next was $236,827.34 for Monroe County Treasure, which was for the 2022 inkeepers' tax collection distribution for April. The total for payroll was $1,747,076.88. $1,234,574.96 were for the direct costs, the remaining $512,501.92 were for the indirect costs of payroll.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Well, I had one comment, and that when I was going through the claims, I noticed that there was one for maintenance and repair of sidewalks. And I just wanted to let the public know that for less than the length of a football field, to repair and replace a section of sidewalk, it costs basically $14,000. So that's why we don't just jump up and down and quickly put in sidewalks throughout the county.
Yeah. They are very expensive to install and maintain, for sure. Excellent. Let's see if there's any public comment on this particular item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen.
Well, I lowered my hand, so I don't know why it's still showing up.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So let's see if there's any other public comments on this item. Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to the board for a vote. All those in favor of approving the claim stocket accounts payable May 4, 2022, and payroll May 6, 2022, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 2-0. I will note, we don't have any reports today, but so we will begin with our new business, please.
Move approval of the MOU with United Way of Monroe County, Inc. Fund name, American Rescue Plan Act Fund, fund number 8950, in an amount of $1,200,000.
I will second that. Mr. Cottle?
Yes. This has been an item that we've discussed at the county for quite a while. This has been placed, this function was placed in our American Rescue Plan Act Fund policy last year. The council has appropriated these dollars for this purpose, and the purpose is in an agreement with United Way to keep going with our Heading Home Plan that was established and founded as we looked at COVID and the COVID response that was needed for particularly when dealing with homelessness and the services necessary for that. This is a fairly straightforward agreement. I will say that, I just want to make sure everyone knows that when we look at the budget section, it's really divided into two parts. One is personnel, and one is programmatic services. We did put language in here so that within the programmatic services categories, those funds could be transferred between those uses. That's simple, that's typical, and that's how we handle things in the county with our budgeting process. But that was something that came up in conversation with United Way, and I wanted to make sure that was clear to everyone. We do have representatives from United Way. I know we have materials in the packet to kind of explain what's going on.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Cottle. Ms. Morgan, did you want to offer some insight and further information? Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. Good to see you all this morning. I'm Mary Morgan. I'm Director of Housing Security with the United Way of Monroe County. Also here via Zoom is Ephraim Pefferman, who is the CEO of the United Way, and Tatiana Peters, who is Assistant Director of Housing Security with us. We're just here to say that we're very appreciative of your support. As you know, the United Way and Community Foundation of Bloomington, Monroe County convened a large working group last year and really spent almost a year working through an update of the Heading Home Plan, which was originally developed in 2014. We are working to make homelessness rare, brief, and non-referential. We are working to make homelessness rare, brief, and non-repeating, and to improve housing security throughout the county. A couple of you are involved in Deeper Way. Commissioner Givens and Angie Purdy are on our advisory group, which meets monthly. We're doing some exciting things and I'm happy to give a formal report at a later date. But just again, to say we're very appreciative of your support and ongoing support, both financial and, and your advice. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you so much. Let's see if Ms. Pfefferman has anything to add at this point. I thought she was on screen too.
Can you hear me?
Did you want to add anything, Ephraim?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, great. No, just, you know, adding on to what Mary said. We're just so grateful for the county's support and leadership and recognition of this issue as one that we, we need to invest in and, you know, work together as a community and as a region, in fact. And I just wanted to say thanks and I'm so proud of, you know, of Mary and Tatiana, of everyone who's been involved in the committees, the working group, the whole process. And here we go. There's a lot of good work underway, a lot of good work ahead. But we're, we're optimistic that with all of us coming together and, you know, actually being able to invest in something like this for probably the first time as a community, that we can change the trajectory for a lot of individuals and, and for our community. So thank you.
Commissioner Givens?
No, I just, it's been an amazing kind of road so far, and I really look forward to the, to the next steps. And I want to say hello to Tatiana in person. It's the first time we've gotten to see her here.
Excellent. All right. And let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Okay, seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the memorandum of understanding with United Way of Monroe County signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two zero. Thank you so much. Thanks for being here. All right, next item, please.
Should I do this motion or you?
Go for it.
Move approval of the appointment of Penny Givens as representative of the Board of Commissioners to hear the Highway Department appeal.
I will second that. Ms. Purdy?
Yes, this is more of a housekeeping item that we have here today. And we just need for the board to appoint Ms. Givens as your representative to hear the appeal that's been filed by Mr. John Brumley, a person who has been aggrieved by a decision of the Highway Department.
Excellent. So this is a Thursday, a Thursday hearing, which is why I cannot attend sadly. But appreciate your willingness to step up. All right, let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the appointment of Commissioner Givens as representative of the Board of Commissioners to hear Highway Department appeal on May 5th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two zero. Thank you so much for doing that. All right, next item, please.
Move approval of the Arnold Ventures Grant Funding via Indiana University. Fund name to be determined, fund number to be determined, in a grant amount of $25,000.
I will second that, and we have Ms. Hamlin here, joining us today to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay? Good. This is actually a sub-recipient commitment form. It's part of the Indiana University contract process. Indiana University is receiving the Arnold Ventures Grant, and this is allowing us to be a sub-recipient of some of those grant dollars for the purpose of, we're, we're going to likely hire someone to work part-time to help us organize the data and pull the data for this racial disparities study. So this is just a sub-recipient commitment form that we're requesting your signature on that will allow us to receive that $25,000 on a reimbursable basis.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Givens, comments, questions?
No, it's nice to see this more fully explained in our packet this week.
Absolutely. Yes, I appreciate the information. This is a great program and congratulations. Let's see if there's any.
Yeah, we're really excited.
See if there's any public comment on this item, either here in the Nat U Hill Room or via Zoom. All right, seeing none, we'll come back to the board for a vote. All those in favor of approving the Arnold Ventures Grant Funding via Indiana University signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of order number two for E and B Paving LLC, Carst Farm Greenway South Segment in an amount of negative $39,586.
I will second that, and we have our Parks Director, Ms. Whitmer here to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Yes, we decided with the help of County Highway and Paul Saturday that a box culvert would be a better option. D N R agrees with that assessment, and they ask that you would approve this deduction.
Excellent. Always nice to see that. Comments, questions? Commissioner Givens?
No, I appreciate the, the work to make this happen.
Yeah, absolutely. Great. Thank you for, for doing this, and thank you to Mr. Saturday as well and the Highway Department. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen, or if you're in the Nat U Hill Room and you want to make a comment, please come up to the podium. All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving change order number two for E and B Paving, Carst Farm Greenway South Segment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of amendment to Indiana University Epley Service Agreement for a term extension.
I will second that. Ms. Whitmer, can you tell us about this?
Yes, we need a term extension in order to accomplish the service agreement and to comply with D N R requirements. I believe it's July 31st, 2022 for the extension, no change in cost.
Okay, excellent. And, and this isn't going to hold you up at all? This isn't going to slow down anything that the parks is trying.
Nope.
Parks Department is trying to do. Okay, excellent. Comments, questions, Commissioner Givens?
I just want to let the public know that D N R requires this of us so that we can actually obtain a lot of additional grant money through the state.
Correct. Anything, any state grant money, especially through D N R, we must have an approved master plan on file.
Right, makes sense. Thank you so much. Thank you for bringing this to us. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Either raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come up to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. All right, seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving an amendment to Indiana University Epley Service Agreement for term extension signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of Environmental Systems Research Institute, S R E Geographic Information System, G I S Software Additional License Purchase, Fund Name Cumulative Capital Fund, Fund Number 1138, in an amount of $7,350.
I will second that, and we have Mr. Ike Miller here, our G I S Coordinator, to tell us about it. Good morning.
Morning. So thank you for hearing the request today. So Monroe County uses a software through S R E. It's kind of a widespread software that offers ArcMap and Arc, Arc G I S Pro to help our departments manage spatial data. And so what our goal with this purchase is to buy an additional license to offer some more advanced editing of spatial data, and then to also increase the number of departments that have the ability to do more basic editing or to be able to host some of the data online from six departments to nine.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Givens?
I've, I've seen some of this usage in, in action. And so it does make a difference when you're trying to make decisions about trails, about just all kinds of things that the county oversees. So I'm in favor of this.
Yeah, absolutely. And so the Auditor, Parks, and Youth Service Bureau are the three who are getting access, gaining access now?
Yes, so some of the departments listed will kind of experience some increased benefits. And then the, those three departments listed will kind of have new service access.
Great, excellent. Thank you so much for organizing this. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the S R E G I S Software Additional License Purchase signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two zero. And we will move on to our next item, please.
Move approval of memorandum of agreements or M O As with Monroe County Community School Corporation, St. Charles Harmony, and the Project School. Fund Number Crisis Coag Supplemental Workforce, Fund Number 8111, in an amount of $161,140.25.
I will second that. Ms. Cottle is here to offer some information, I believe.
Yes, thank you.
There you are. Good morning.
Yes. So this is part of the coag grant funding. I tend to refer to it as the school grants. These are funds for COVID-19 response and immunization. So as things have unfolded, this started out specifically as COVID response. And they, as things have, you know, changed, it encompasses more all of immunizations and health in the schools. So we are pleased that we're still trying to get these funds to the schools. So as long as they can show that they're using it, really COVID-related, immunization-related, because we know people fell behind on their immunizations because of the pandemic, right? So all of that is combined. These four schools have submitted their, signed their letter of interest. They've signed their attestation, the M O U, and they have already begun and are halfway through their deliverables. So these are mostly tasks that the state is asking schools to complete anyway. And again, we have funding, everybody, there was a base amount for schools, and then the rest was determined based on population served.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Givens?
So this is basically pass-through. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate you, your patience in coming back for this item. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item, either here in the Nat U Hill Room. Please come to the podium or raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the memorandum of agreements with Monroe County Community School Corporation, St. Charles School, Harmony School, and the Project School, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Okay, so we don't have any appointments today. I do have a few announcements. First, we do want to thank the election workers and the voters who made our democracy work well and function well yesterday on primary election day. Congratulations to every candidate, whether they want or not, for all their hard work in bringing important policies to the community. We do have two blood drives scheduled for June, Monday, June 27th, 10 to 3. Thursday, June 30th, 1 to 6. Both of those are at IV Tech. And thanks to our Emergency Management Department for organizing that. A reminder that the Board of Commissioners, individuals, as individuals have office hours throughout the month, where you can come in to join us via Zoom. There are different days, different times throughout the month. Join us via Zoom, talk through any questions or concerns that you have one-on-one with one of the members of the Board of Commissioners. We do have board and commission openings. So please go to co-monroe.in.us and apply. Also, from the Hoosier Hills Food Bank, step out, stamp out hunger. They're going to have 4 to 6 p.m. drop-off for food from the community for the food bank on Friday, May 13th. And they will be, once again, resuming the pickup from mailboxes throughout the community of food to donate to the food bank. That is on Saturday, May 14th. We do want to send a huge thank you to the food bank, but especially to the Letter Carriers Union Branch 828 for all the hard work. It's not an easy job and, and it really does help out the community. Fresh Fridays will be part of the Hoosier Hills Food Bank work again this summer, May through September. The first Fresh Fridays food pickup is on Friday, May 27th. So contact the Hoosier Hills Food Bank for additional information. Did you have anything else to add?
Well, I just wanted to say with our virtual office hours, while we record these public meetings, we do not record the virtual office hours. Those are considered time to speak privately with the Commissioners. And so I just want to make sure the public understands that.
That's a good point. Thank you. All right, all right. We do have some agenda items for our work session. Can we come back at 11:05? Okay, great. So with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and our work session will begin at 11:05. Thank you, everyone. Verger.